6:05 PM with the Tuesday, February 6th, February 2nd. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bertani.
Here.
Councilmember Moy. Councilmember Panduro.
Here.
Councilmember Tim.
Here.
Councilmember Tonison.
Here.
Vice Mayor Picaro.
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here. And the invocation this evening will be led by Elder Jerome Childs Church of the Living God.
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, loud and clear.
Okay. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity and the blessing to assemble together once again to conduct the necessary business for the city of Fairfield. We seek your wisdom and guidance as we address this ongoing pandemic. I want to recognize our Honorable Mayor, Harry Price, and Vice Mayor Rick Picaro, along with the other council members, city manager, and other public officers. And Lord, as we conduct our business, let us remain humble and mindful that we are servants and that the public can trust us to make good decisions. And finally, Lord, let us remain prayerful for the families that have lost loved ones to the COVID-19 virus, which makes our work even more critically important. We ask all of this in the precious and mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. And the pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by Councilman Scott Tonison, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll begin with council reports, please. And we'll start with Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for tuning in this evening and for continuing to participate in our city government. I want to thank everyone for the amazing council retreats that we have had so far. And I want to invite you to attend our next council retreat virtually, which is going to be on Monday, the 8th of February, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. This is a special time of the year when we get to communicate directly regarding issues that we are dealing with and with visioning for the city as we move forward together and become something new in the future. So, Monday, the 8th of February, 4:00 to 7:00 PM, please join us. And Mr. Mayor, thank you for the invitation to the State of the Base presentation at Travis Air Force Base this Friday. Look forward to hanging out with you there. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Panduro, please. Your report, please.
One. For the last couple of weeks, Councilmember Scott Tonison and I have been visiting different sites, as I've mentioned before. And most recently, we did visit the Samoa Christian Fellowship Church. And we were both just very impressed with the programs they have there for our community, the food distribution, the job training. The entire time we were there, it was just busy with people. And it was just incredible to see all the work that they do and the community partners that they have. So, they are truly an asset to our city. And I'm just so grateful that we were both able to go out and visit that site. And second, we both also participated in the League of Cities New Mayors and Councilmembers Academy last week and just learned so much. I learned that I have a lot to learn, but I'm excited to do so. But also, it was great to meet and hear from other people who newly elected, like ourselves, in different parts of the state. So, looking forward to building those relationships as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tim, please.
Yeah, Mayor, just very briefly, I just want to welcome everybody here tonight. Hopefully, we can get our business done and move smoothly. But I also wanted to give a shout out to the city and staff for our workshop that we had over the weekend. I think we actually got a lot of things, a lot of things done. I look forward to the next one. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vice Mayor, please. Your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, first of all, I want to thank my colleagues for everyone's participation in our workshop last weekend. I think I agree that we did get a lot done and had very good discussions. I just wanted to say that today, I actually visited City Church today with Don LaBarre from the city staff. And I was very impressed by all the things they have going there with Pastor Scott. You know, the Living Center, a 12-month living program, food distribution, the free clinic, the graffiti abatement, everything they're doing to work with the city and the amount of people that they actually are taking in and then actually taking them back to their encampment if necessary. I was really impressed. I think, you know, people don't see the City Church when you're going down the street because it's on the side. But I was impressed by the size of the facility and all they do there. And definitely, I will be going back again. I think that, you know, Monday, February 8th, we're going to discuss homelessness. And I think they are one of the pieces that we have to talk about, that piece is of the puzzle that can really try to solve. You can't ever really solve the problem, but at least you can help the problem. And I think that, to me, I saw a piece today of that puzzle. So, that was very impressive. The other thing I had mentioned the other day, and I'm really happy that Fairfield is participating in anti-trafficking coalition. I know Councilwoman Panduro is on the coalition with me too. And I'm glad that I saw a couple of our police officers actually participating. So, Fairfield is definitely a partner in that. And that's really all I wanted to say, Mayor. And I just wanted to end it by saying, you know, to thank you again for my colleagues for their participation. And I know next week, on the 8th and the 9th, will be some more. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And I too would like to, oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Tonison, please.
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Nothing for you. Well, I would also like to add to my report that the retreat is an annual event that the city of Fairfield, city council and staff go through. And it's an opportunity for us to come together and discuss the issues that are important to us as well as to figure out solutions and new initiatives. Moreover, this city council and this Assoon City Council serve as the Board of Directors for the Fairfield-Sassoon Sewer District. And last week, at its annual conference for the California Association of Sanitary Agencies, the Vice Mayor and I both participated. And it's another one of those opportunities that all of us need to take advantage of to improve our skills, our knowledge base, and the service then that we provide for our residents. And Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I have nothing to report. You should have the weekly reports with you yesterday. And if there are any questions, I'll stand for addressing those.
Any comments or questions, colleagues? We turn then to the City Attorney, if we would, please. Greg?
Mayor, nothing to add tonight?
Okay. And Madam Clerk, your report, please. Karen, you have to unmute yourself, please.
I was unmuted and then I muted myself. Anyway, I just wanted to thank Peggy and Mike Richardson. They adopted a section of Beck Avenue. But they actually clean up their entire neighborhood every day. They're retired and they walk around the neighborhood, the entire neighborhood, and clean it up. So, very thankful to them. And then also, a group of physical therapists from Travis Air Force Base, who has, their group name is unusual. It's dolor et cruciatur, which is Latin for pain and torture. They adopted a section of Cannon Road. So, I'm thankful for them as well. Thank you.
And I want to acknowledge on behalf of our colleagues all the wonderful work that you are doing with volunteers who are coming in many cases, right out of their own neighborhoods and making such an important difference. Well, let us turn now to the process for public comments, Madam Clerk.
Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. When joining via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine to speak. Members of the public wishing to submit their comments via email can email cityclerk@fairfield.ca.gov. And these comments will be forwarded to council for review, but will not be read aloud during the meeting. Thank you.
The first public speaker is Edward Russell. Go ahead, Edward.
White folks, what a privilege to treat you well. Quick question too. Did you remove Dustin Joseph yet? You know, he murdered a man. Then have you also apologized to Dennis Green, the black man, that your racist city manager ordered to be arrested just because he was attending the meeting? I'm appalled by the use of black phrases during Black History Month by your racist organization and your Fairfield community service employees. Basically a slap in the face. I'm formally requesting that racist council member Tim resign because of his support for domestic terrorism and his silence would say so much. Also asking for Councilwoman Moy to resign due to her support of the domestic terrorists in 2019 and most recently, January 6th, where her company funded money for the attempted coup of our United States government. If neither one of these two decide to resign, I will create a petition to have them removed and then it'll go down as a disgraceful move on their part, which I would love. So, you know, you decide which one you want to do. The city manager and the attorney are both disgraced to their family, or maybe they're not, you know, racist, raised racist. Also Bertani, if you remain silent and allow these clowns to stay on the council, you're just as responsible. So, I would say all in all, right now Fairfield is getting laughed at and mocked by Vacaville, which is not a shock. So, I expect something to happen within the next 24 hours. And if I don't, I wouldn't expect too much from a bunch of white men with toddler-sized penises. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mari Bowie.
Hello. Happy Black History Month. That wasn't actually mentioned by anyone. But Happy Black History Month. With that being said, last week you guys had, or this past week, you guys had the city council retreat. And would you guys put inside the agenda as well as also kind of make reference to last meeting that it would be a kind of reciprocal communication or transparency? But then when me and my fellow friends and organizers had made comments, there was still no response to issues that we have continually brought up for like almost 10 months essentially. And so, this Black History Month, I'd like for y'all to kind of make a statement or kind of a commitment to listening to the black voices within your community. Fairfield Change is a black-led organization. And with that, you guys have chose to make us an enemy rather than listening to any of our ideas. Even if you don't agree with my politics, you don't agree with what we say, you still have to listen to your constituents. Because at the end of the day, Fairfield Change doesn't answer to you, but you do answer to us as your constituents. We put you in power. We are the ones whose lives you're affecting. So, it's imperative that you guys listen to us. You guys can't just continue ignoring us because you don't like us. We have amassed a large following. You guys started doing virtual meetings after you guys arrested us. And you guys also started deciding to do COVID restrictions the day that you guys arrested us. So, it's clear that like you guys, or in another time, when we mentioned you guys' issues of public comment, you guys made, you guys made a statement about the Brown Act. Before that, when we mentioned Dustin Joseph, you guys had Deanna Cantrell. She was allowed to do public comment even though we were not. You guys allowed Deanna Cantrell to make a public comment. So, if you guys can be reactive to things that you know that we post about, to things that you know that we care about, the very least you can do is try to meet with community members or at least listen to our issues. I've heard on several occasions, you guys say you guys don't know what we want. You guys don't really know who we are. And even if that was true, that's kind of just more alarming because it just shows that you guys have no interest in the people in your community. You guys care about youth involvement. The majority of us are youth. The majority of us, the majority of our supporters are youth folks. But also, we have a large following. I mean, we have thousands of followers. We've made nationwide news. We've done a lot of mutual aid projects. You guys don't even know any of the things that we do. And so, at this point, I feel like we're becoming more of the people who are arrested at city council versus the people who provide mutual aid to the houses, the people who helped you guys in the middle of a fire crisis when the city and the county completely locked it. There was no resources. Half of the places were closed during those fire evacuations that you guys were publishing. So, people were being sent to places that were not open. Again, it's Black History Month. And you guys can post all the Martin Luther King quotes. You guys can post that you guys care about all these different black leaders. But you guys are literally failing history, ignoring black leadership, ignoring black voices, and failing to listen to you.
15 more seconds, Mari.
Thank you. And failing to listen to the people in your community who are the most marginalized. Your failure to even try to listen or meet, I have only met with two of y'all, Kat Moy and Pam Bertani, is just really disappointing and shows that you guys don't have a commitment to listen to black folks or marginalized folks in your community.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I respond really quickly?
Councilmember Bertani, indeed you may.
Thank you. So, let me just say that I have listened to not only the comments and concerns of Fairfield Change, but I think that, you know, we've tried to do something about it. You know, I'm on the record for vehemently disagreeing with the arrest of the protesters at the meeting. And to that end, I called the police chief Cantrell the very next day and had a very long conversation with her about my displeasure with the arrests. You know, primarily because I, you know, believe in the First Amendment. But, you know, I didn't see any incitement of violence or anything else that would call for such a measure. But what, and, you know, I'm speaking of Fairfield Change now. What I reached out to Fairfield Change, literally, the very next day and made sure that Police Chief Cantrell would meet with those who were arrested to start a discussion about what could be done to remedy this situation. And so, those conversations did not take place. And I'm not sure why. I mean, I have an idea why, but I won't state it. I'm not sure why. But I just want, I just want this community to know that we're listening to you. We are listening to you and we're responding to you. But if you want to just fight, 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 then we may not get to a resolution. It's all about problem solving. You know, the Budget Advisory Committee came out of discussions with, you know, motivated by Fairfield Change and others. So, I just, I guess I'm saying I object to the characterization of the city council as a whole just not being responsive at all. That's not how I see this. You know, we're about solutions. If you have a solution, if you're solution-oriented, come to this city council and we will listen. And we have listened. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay. Michael Johnson. And unmute, Michael.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Yeah. My name is Mike. I'm the president of the board of Salon United Soccer Club, formerly known as Fairfield-Sassoon Youth Soccer League. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3) volunteer-driven organization. And we have been serving the youth of our community for the last 40 years. We have about 1,500 boys and girls that come through every year, ages 5 to 17. I believe we're one of the most inexpensive after-school athletic programs available in the area. What has helped us keep our programs affordable is our agreement with the city for the use of Okto and Soccer Complex. We signed a 20-year agreement in 96 and a 15-year renewal in 2009, whereby we have priority use of the fields. And in exchange, we do a lot of the maintenance at the complex. We have a couple of issues that I like to bring to your attention. Number one is we've seen a worrisome increase in crime at Okto. Drug use, prostitution, adults with very erratic behavior, fires, and multiple break-ins. Unfortunately, most of that has not happened in view of children. But unfortunately, some of it has. We have worked on this issue with Parks and Rec, the Police Department, and Public Works. They've all been very responsive to us and I really appreciate them. But our approach has been very reactive and the problem still persists. Number two, with 1,500 kids coming through the program every year, we are at capacity. We need additional field space and facilities, especially for our winter soccer programs. We, this time of year, have a really big need for lights. Um, we, this time of year have a really big need for lights. Um, kids can't get onto the field until after school and it's getting dark really early. Um, this has been an ongoing issue. We try to rent, um, I think there's five or six baseball fields that do have lights. Uh, we don't have any soccer fields that do have lights in the city of Fairfield. Um, some of the baseball fields, for example, the Fairfield Expos Baseball Field, they have lights, but in their contract, soccer is specifically excluded. Um, so I'm hoping that we can work together with you guys and we've made suggestions to Parks and Rec on how we can address both of these issues. Um, we just need help from the city to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can respond quickly, we've
Please.
been having some internal meetings, uh, about the issues that have been brought up here. Uh, so we are working on some of those things, both with the, um, uh, the issues with crime and drugs and things down there as well as lighting and some other things. So those things are being worked and, uh, we'll reach out, uh, to them as well and have those conversations.
Thank you.
And are there any more speakers before we close public comment?
Okay, thank you very much. And now we turn to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the council or public has a comment. Saying, unentertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved by, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, yep.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy is absent. Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Yes. We turn now to, motion carries unanimously. We turn now to new business, please. Item number one.
Item number, item number nine. Heart of Fairfield Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven of the City Council of the City of Fairfield authorizing a task order for Bennett Engineering Services to provide engineering and design services for the downtown bollard project. And Heart of Fairfield Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight of the City Council of the City of Fairfield to suspend competitive bidding and authorize the city manager to purchase crash-rated removable bollards and updating the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget. And our presenter is Ryan Pangeneben, Assistant Public Works Director. Unless that's changed.
No, that's, that's not changed. You're right, Karen.
Okay, thank you, Ryan.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, Ryan Pangeneben, I am the Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer. Many exciting projects in the downtown are underway, and I'm happy to be here tonight presenting one of those projects. It's intended to improve the experience for special event goers, and it's a new way to program and activate the Texas Street Corridor. Before jumping into the specifics on the project itself, I'd like to provide a little bit of context. As council is aware, there currently is four annual city-sponsored festivities in the downtown area. A quick shout out should go to our Community Development Department as they continue to seek public-private partnerships to program vibrant special events and highlight the downtown as the restaurant and entertainment center of Fairfield. So for these city-sponsored events, normally this requires a temporary closure of Texas Street. And to prevent vehicles from entering into the gathering space, Public Works crews set up concrete barricades, stage vehicles, or have flaggers at closure locations within the area. Electronic message signs and detour, uh, if, on A-frames provide advanced warning to motorists. And this allows continuous traffic flow during the event. So while staff has been able to manage the setup and breakdown, um, which on average takes about two to three, um, hours to perform, and it is consisting of a team of three to five people, it's a bit cumbersome and it's, it takes a lot of work. Additionally, there are situations when the temporary traffic control devices are limited or not available, and this creates a challenge also. So the proposed capital project is intended to efficiently and safely facilitate the closure of Texas Street for these future special events. This will be achieved through the installation of concrete anchors and removable bollards. So as shown in this picture, the six-inch diameter steel bollard stands about three feet in height and can be spaced about five to seven feet apart. This forms a secure perimeter. This will deter oncoming vehicles while still allowing pedestrians and bicyclists to pass. The bollard can be removed fr- following the conclusion of the special event and cleanup crews and cleanup crews can return the roadway to its pre-existing condi- condition. Sorry about that. Um, hold on two seconds. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I was having a little bit of technical difficulties with the Zoom going on. I apologize about that. Um, so let me pick up here. So this, this slide here provides an overview of the bollard locations and the ability to scope and scale the temporary road closure to match an event. So for example, let's say the business and restaurants between the Jefferson and Webster um, are interested in holding a mem- a Memorial Day block party. So there's flexibility in focusing on closing just this segment of Texas and allowing the signalized intersection to control traffic during this event. So this red dot is just a graphical representation of the street bollard, and what's shaded in green is just the organized event area. So the bollard project allows the closure to expand west and onto the streets and alleyways of Webster and Jacks- and Ja- and Jackson. And in its ultimate configuration, it includes the full closure of Madison Street. So detours during these special events will be through Empire and Missouri Street. So this matrix, it summarized the key criteria analyzed during the bollard selection process. And a significant consideration is safety and selecting a tested crash-rated bollard. So what does that exactly mean, crash-rated? Staff's recommendation of the Reliance Foundry Bollard, it has been designed and engineered to stop a full-size car or light truck SUV traveling at about thirty miles per hour. And while it's slightly more expensive, selecting a non-rated, untested bollard brings significant risk of failure, safety concerns, and potential liability to the city. So from a financial perspective, the table on the left, it provides a conceptual cost estimate. And as is detailed here, staff estimates all phases of the project to be around six hundred and twenty thousand to six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So this funding for the project will no- have no impact on the general fund. And when we compare this one-time cost to the annual cost of the traffic control expense, this, the city's cost recovery on this investment is roughly two to six years. And the range of possibilities is based on the assumed number of future special events that would occur in the downtown. So pending approval tonight of these two resolutions, uh, the design work would commence immediately and continue through March. Staff is targeting, uh, construction in late April with the intent of wrapping up in May. And similar to other street construction activities, there will be intermittent road closures and temporary detours. And we'll make sure to keep the businesses and residents informed of this work through focused notification letters and targeted neighborhood-specific social media posts. So staff's recommended action tonight is approving the design contract with Bennett Engineering and to complete these bid documents and authorizing the purchase of the bollards from Reliance Foundry. I'd be happy to address any questions you have regarding the project, and thank you.
Any comments or questions for Ryan, please? Councilmember Tonison?
Yes, Mayor, I, uh, I had spoken with, uh, with David and Ryan earlier, and, uh, my concern was the payback. What, what's it gonna cost to recoup our, our costs for the entire project? And that's running at about a two to, two to six-year plan, uh, or timeframe depending on the, uh, the amount of events we have. Does that sound correct, Ryan?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to get that out there. Uh, they got back to me soon and, uh, we're gonna pay it back soon.
Okay. Any other comments, colleagues? Councilwoman Bertani, please, and then the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think it's a good idea, but I think the timing is off. I mean, we're not, you know, it's COVID nineteen. So we're not going to be having any big events downtown probably in twenty twenty-one, unfortunately. You know, and so my concern is why focus our efforts here when we can focus our efforts on making downtown look better? It's an issue that I have been harking on, literally, um, for a long time. Why can't we line our streets, um, with tree-lighted, you know, with lighted trees? Why can't we do things to make it more pleasant and more safe to be down there? Why, why is this a priority now? I mean, I, like I said, I think it's a good idea, but is this really where we need to have our focus right now? And that's just, that's my only concern with that. Ryan, if you can speak to that, um, if there's some time is of the essence or, um, some other, you know, justification, I'm, I'm glad to hear it. Thank you.
No, thank you for that. I think one of the desires that we have is, um, once COVID and the pandemic, uh, we've, we solved that issue, being ready and, and being able to move swiftly so that we can hold these events. So, um, one of the things I know we're excited about is, is talking about farmers markets and, and special festivities in the downtown. So, um, that is something that we're trying to prioritize and get done so that we are ready in the, in the event that, um, COVID goes away. And then, so we have worked on the lights. Um, I know it's been some time. We've, we've, we started out on a kind of a pilot project to look at wrapping the streetlights for that main core from Madison. We actually finished it out late last year to, to, to extend the tree lighting all the way, um, to Pennsylvania along Texas. So, um, we listened and, and we were able to complete some of that work and, um, but yeah, with the bollards in particular, we're, we're trying to get ready for when, when everything opens back up and support the businesses and, and restaurants down there.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that.
Yes, go ahead.
Councilwoman Bertani brings up a, a great point, and we, we talked about that very issue and felt that, um, doing it now in preparation for if we're able to hold certain events like a Fourth of July this year, some other kinds of things, if we're able to get to that point, great. But having this prepared for the twenty twenty-two season when that kicks off, uh, is a, is a big deal for us. And as we try to continue to beautify and do those kinds of things that we need to do as, as Councilmember Bertani brought up, lights and other kinds of things to beautify that, there's also a priority in there to be ready for bringing in large crowds to infuse some, some revenues and some excitement, uh, into our downtown areas. We're seeing lots of businesses right now closing. Starbucks, for example, uh, down there on the corner, kitty corner from, uh, from the county offices has closed. Uh, other businesses may be going quickly. And so we're also trying to do some things to recruit and, uh, and, and and put some excitement into that area that needs to be there. But it is, it's, it's an issue of timing. We think that maybe this is the right time to do it so that we're ready for, uh, if we're able to have events this year as well as being ready for the twenty twenty-two season. Um, but boy, I'll tell you, she's right. Flip a coin, there's lots of different ways we can go here. But this is one of those that we discussed and felt if we're gonna make this investment, this is a good time to do it.
Sounds like you have a vision, Mr. City Manager. So thank you, uh, appreciate that input.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, I think it, it is a good idea, but just to follow up on what Councilwoman Bertani said also. You know, I've probably been one of the biggest critics of the, of the downtown plan, the Heart of Fairfield, not critics about what we want to do, but how slow it's been, you know, and I know I've talked about this before. Um, you know, it seems like every four months we get an update, but there's really not much happening. So actually, this is something happening. It's good. But yeah, I'm hoping that we can provide some relief to the downtown businesses with this. I know we've talked about the one-way streets and maybe, you know, the parking would be better. I hope that's something that we're seriously starting to consider. Um, I'm hoping that the next real update we have on the Heart of Fairfield Plan, we will see more than we've seen in the past. Um, I know we had certain timelines. I think a couple of months ago we looked at, a few months ago, and I was happy to see that. But, you know, the progress really hasn't been there, and I'm not blaming anybody in particular. But I hear this from a lot of our citizens too. Hey, what's up with the Heart of Fairfield Plan? What's going on? And I really don't have the answers, except for there's not a lot happening right now. But this is a sign, at least if there is something happening, but, um, I'm hoping to see more at the next update. So that's my comment, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, what I was gonna say was, what, two months ago, we approved the parklets? And I would assume that they're under construction or can be ready at any time. So you have the bollards put up. Remember, we approved, uh, the start of undergrounding the utilities. Uh, and then, of course, then the, the city parking lots. And yeah, it's, it's a lot of money. But, uh, to what the Vice Mayor said is, we're actually starting to see some movement. And what Councilwoman Pam Bertani said is, she has been a strong champion for this from day one when you got elected. And if not today, we need to be ready, and we need to be ready to move, and I think we're going in that direction. And this also brings up, you know, what are we gonna do with, uh, the Main Street Association? So there's a, there's a, I, I guess a, a variety of things in play here. But I'm excited to see this because we're actually, and what Pam said to the city manager, somebody has a vision and we're acting on the vision instead of just talking, we're moving forward. So I'm excited to support this, absolutely. And it's just one start of something, something to continue. So, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you. And, and I'd just like to add a couple of quick comments. I think the folks who live downtown, who do business downtown, and those who want to return to downtown need a very positive sign that good things are happening and that we're preparing. We're not waiting for it to be at the last minute and summer has already gone by. So I think it's going to raise people's expectations. It's certainly going to give folks confidence that the city of Fairfield is paying attention and taking action while we can now. So. Any other comments? Ryan, thank you for your presentation. Entertain a motion then to approve both resolutions, Madam Clerk.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Moy is absent. Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Tonison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
An enthusiastic yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I can turn to the city attorney real quick, just to make sure that we're able to do both resolutions with one vote. Uh, Greg, are we okay with that?
In this ca- in this case, it was fine to do both as one motion. We said a little time.
Mr. City Attorney, keep me honest.
We're good.
There is no other business before this body. We are adjourned until, oh, Councilmember Tonison, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I sent a, what I thought was a private message to David, but it wasn't. So I, ma- maybe David, if you can jump in and expand on it, we're going to be looking for individuals for the general plan. And there's gonna be an ad coming out in the paper. I don't know if David's still long hair, if he could just expand on that a little bit.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, we're, we're gonna be reaching out, um, uh, as, as a part of the effort to, um, do the general plan update, we're gonna, uh, be putting together an advisory committee, uh, and at the request of, uh, Councilmember Tonison, um, we're gonna put out an ad and just call for anyone who's interested in participating in that process. Uh, we will have, uh, upcoming on, uh, next Tuesday night on the ninth. Uh, there's gonna be a, a joint council and planning commission meeting, uh, where our consultant that's assisting us in doing the general plan update will, um, guide all of you, uh, plus the planning commissioners through a conversation, uh, that's gonna start that visioning process, uh, for the general plan. And then, uh, that'll be rolling into a, a pretty substantial public engagement process. Uh, and members of the advisory committee, uh, will be, uh, there. We'll, we'll probably have about thirteen folks on that committee. Um, and they'll be there, uh, to help guide the process throughout the next eighteen months, uh, before it starts coming back to city council for, um, you know, your decision-making process. And so, um, if anyone's interested, uh, we'll get that information out here, uh, within the next week or so. Um, so pay attention either to, uh, our social media feeds, uh, or I think we're putting the ad in the Daily Republic. And that'll have instructions on how people can contact us to, um, you know, put in their name for that committee.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, that should have been.